Okay, hello and welcome to the special board meeting of the Peralta Colleges Board. Most of you know me, I'm Mickey Gonzales Yuen, I'm the Vice President of the Board and our Board President Cindy Napolea Bella Reese has been held up for a little bit and she asked me to step in and assume the duties of the President for the start of the meeting. So, welcome to those of you who are here. We're, I don't believe we have a readout from closed session, so I think we need a pledge of allegiance and then a roll call. Trustee Withrow, would you lead us in the pledge? We'll get a flag here soon enough.
My diligence to the flag.
The which stands.
One nation.
With liberty and justice.
Thank you very much. Good work, Amiri, could you take a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Student trustee Yuruni?
Here.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Here.
Trustee Handy?
Here.
Trustee Delphin Polk?
Here.
Trustee Bonia?
Present.
Trustee Gonzalez Yuen?
I'm right here.
Trustee Napolea Bella Reese. Not here at the moment.
Okay, we ready to go here?
Yes, sir.
Good, okay, the next item is affirmation of our statement of cooperation and so per our new custom, I'm going to just read this statement as a reminder of how we'd like to proceed. "We, the Peralta Community College District Board of Trustees, commit to the following in our effort to help students reach their educational goals. We agree to listen and to seek to understand others and opposing points of view with the expectation of good intentions and a deep commitment to the district's students. We commit to being prepared for each meeting and to work within our established communication protocols when we seek additional information. Members will review the agenda in advance of each meeting and adhere to Board Policy 2340 for adding items to the agenda. We've reviewed the Board's Code of Ethics and commit to reviewing it annually at our organizational meeting to remind ourselves of the behavior we are to exhibit and the guidelines we're following in our role. If the Code of Ethics is violated, we commit to follow the process stated in the code and will first address concerns informally to settle disagreements one-on-one between and among members before moving to the formal process. We agree that from time to time the Chair will or may remind members of appropriate behavior and may call for recess or redirect members if they stray from the topic of discussion. We collectively recognize that it is within duties and the authority of the Chair to render decisions or take actions to keep our meetings on track and adherence to Board policy. We will strive to fulfill the vision we established for ourselves and will model the behavior we want others to exhibit." Thank you very much for that opportunity to remind us where we're going and I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Got a motion and second. Thank you, trustee Jenkins. I think we need a roll call on the agenda, yes, thank you.
Student trustee Yuruni?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Delphin Polk?
Yes.
Trustee Bonia?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Yuen?
I'm right here.
Trustee Napolea Bella Reese? There she is.
There she is.
Trustee Napolea Bella Reese is logged on, she's asked me to continue facilitating until she gets her internet connection squared away, at which point I will happily cede the chair to her. We do not have a report taken of actions taken in closed session, but before we go into public communication, I think that that public communication will go just a little bit faster with a brief announcement from Chancellor Jackson. Chancellor?
Thank you, trustee Ewing. I wanted to take just a few minutes to address some concerns that were voiced at the last board meeting and even though this is a special board meeting for board training on the board roles as we start with negotiations and the reopeners, I did want to just respond to that because there was some concern regarding actions that I had spoke about at our district's shared governance body and our district's Governance Council or DGC. At that meeting I had indicated that the I as well as the senior administrators would be taking a relook at the recommendations for hire for fiscal year 2122. The Board had not approved the hires as were presented and so looking at our district in terms of our financial stability, which was one of the main goals that the Board wanted me to address during my short time here and given the items that had been addressed in previous reports from the Board of Governors, from the Fitmat team and even from our ACCJC accreditation, I really wanted to take a kind of a relook, retool and I indicated at that meeting that we would not, we as the administration and me specifically, would not be taking a draconian approach to trying to reduce our budget, that it would be very deliberative, that we would look at our numbers, we would look at options, we would consider other alternatives, but that we had certain parameters that we wanted to stay within. One of those was we wanted to stay within the 50% law and after reviewing where we were last year, and usually that happens in October every year, we take a snapshot of where we are, last year we were at 50.11%, so very close, but still within compliance of the 50% law. The other thing that I wanted us to do was to make sure that we worked within our budget projections. At that time, we did not have the May revise, we did not know what the COLA was, we are assuming that the SCIF funds, the Hold Harmless Funds will be going away, although there are some moves to extend that for another year, but right now those are due to sunset next year. And then the other guideline was that we wanted to identify those critical hires that had gone through the shared governance process and that had been presented at the Chancellor's Council or, excuse me, Chancellor's Cabinet for recommendation to the Board. We would also look at vacancies and this was the guideline that I provided to the administrative team, if last year in October of 2020, there was an individual in a position and subsequent to that, that position became available or was vacant because that individual had already been counted towards the 50% rule if they were not a faculty member, that we could move forward with hires. So those were kind of the broad parameters that we looked at and then we sat down and looked at what are our numbers. Those same projections were provided at the last DGC meeting and I believe are available online, but things have changed, things always change, but right now I am happy to say that I feel comfortable, I feel confident that the positions that we are putting forward to the Board of Trustees can be sustained and not require us to make any drastic moves if the budget fluctuates within reason, you know, you never know what's going to happen on the economic side, but I do feel very comfortable in recommending to the Board, we provided a breakout by the four sites, including the district, I mean, excuse me, the four sites, the colleges, as well as the district office and I presented that to the administrators this morning and I also presented to the Academic Senate, the District Academic Nimitz Senate this afternoon and also provided the Board kind of with an overview. It will be coming back for ratification by the Board at the meeting in next week, May the 25th and I believe that hopefully, given the details that we will provide at that time, that it will go forward. Right now, we're looking at just summative totals of hiring 19 faculty members, looking at hiring 41 classified professionals, again, many of those positions were, they had someone in them in October of last year, so they're not new positions and then nine administrative positions and if you take that total, we would be hiring 27.5 faculty members, 59.4 classified professionals and 13.1 administrators. So I did want to make that known because I have not had a chance to meet with the Classified Senate, but I have met with all the other constituency groups, so thank you very much for the opportunity to present that information here in open session. Trustee Ewing?
Thank you very much, Chancellor Jackson, I'm sure that'll be a relief to many people. We're going to move to public comment. I'm looking in our list of attendees and right now it looks as though there are 13 people and maybe 12 in the attendee group, a number of whom signed up potentially for public comment. What we'd like to have you do, if you were in the attendee group, it's not clear which of you wanted to speak in public comment and not, so if you could raise your hands over in the public comment area right now, we could see who it is that is wanting to speak and then make an appropriate adjustment. It looks as though there are just two people who want to speak. I've asked trustee Jenkins if he would moderate this and I think we could probably do the full three minutes, yes? Trustee Jenkins?
Absolutely, we're going to go in order, let's start with Jennifer Shnawski followed by Jamil Tiir.
She has been prepondered panelist. Jennifer, are you there?
I just got in, hi. Good evening, thank you so much, thank you for my full three minutes. Thank you Chancellor for the announcement that we will be hiring some of our full-time faculty. I would like to point out just a couple of things regarding that. We, according to the spreadsheet that I received last week, there are 37 vacant positions for full-time faculty and so we're agreeing to hire 19 of them. We are currently, according to the BI tool this very semester, more than our instruction, more than half of our instructional FTEF are part-time faculty. So yes, we're hitting the 50% law barely, but we're certainly not even close to the 75% rule. In fact, we're inverted, more of our instruction is done by part-timers than by full-timers. So I think we have a long way to go and I hope we have a plan to hire more full-timers so that we can continue the work of the colleges. And that's not what I was going to talk about today, though. So what I was going to say is I'm really excited that you have this special meeting tonight and that you're going to talk about negotiations. I'm really happy to know that the Board's role in negotiations will be delineated and defined clearly. I was really concerned last week that it was brought before the Board to discuss and approve two MOUs that were not actually part of negotiations at all, but grievance settlements, which according to Article 19 of our collective bargaining agreement are not subject to Board approval and the Board is not part of the grievance process in any way. So I hope that'll be clarified as part of the training tonight. Again, thank you for having this special meeting and taking the time and I look forward to hearing more, thanks so much.
Jamil, are you there?
Yes, I am, can you hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jamil Tiir and I am the Vice President of the Peralta Chapter of SEIU 1021. Our classified professionals have been without an updated contract since July of 2019. As we enter into negotiations for the first time in several years on what many of us hope or would like to hope is the tail end of a pandemic, we'd like to remind the Board of our dedication to students, our fellow staff, faculty and our community. We often hear that students come to Peralta for the instruction, but they also become come because our retention and outreach specialists go into their schools and communities and make our students aware of the opportunity. Our students are retained not only through innovative curriculum, but because of access to financial aid so that they have to work less time and they have time to attend classes and really focus on their studies. They're retained because of support through care, through programs like CARE and EOPS and ASESO and UJBA. They come because of the support they receive through our IT technicians, because they have questions answered by our admissions and record staff and because of the support that they see, receive through our SAS, our Student Accessibility Services teams. And I'd just like to remind the Board that our students and classified professionals serve everywhere and deserve to work in environments that are both safe from pandemic issues and also safe physically. I'd like to end tonight by thanking you all for your dedication to Peralta, our community, our students, faculty, staff and administration and I'm looking forward to working with you in future negotiations, thank you.
Thank you, Jamil. Is there anybody else in the attendees that wants to speak? If so, raise your hand, if not, hold your peace. Looks like Richard, can we promote Richard to a panelist?
Hi, good evening. I imagine you can all hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, I just wanted to come on tonight, you know, in anticipation and excitement for all of our members and for the district entering this contract negotiations round that really addresses our contract going back to 2018. entering this contract negotiations round that really addresses our contract going back to 2018. You know, we're finally being able to sit down with the district and we're hoping to, you know, to to come up with a fair contract that's definitely well overdue. Ten twenty-one represents over four hundred members here at the Peralta Community College District. And we are definitely the lifeline and the lifeblood of this district. We support, we directly support our students, our community, the faculty and administrators. We touch all aspects of what happens throughout the district. And one of the main concerns that we're looking for is to address the safety and security of our students, our staff and our community. That's definitely the utmost importance. So we're hoping that the board can provide some direction to the administrative team and to the to the legal consultant team that is going to be sitting down with us for negotiations and really provide some direction for them to to respect classified professionals and not treat us as second class to consultants, to contractors. You know, there's millions of dollars that are being spent in in those avenues and we really need support because we're short-staffed in almost every department. We've taken a hit with our hourlies being just pulled away a couple of years ago and we were already short-staffed and are still struggling to maintain quality services to the faculty, to the students and to the administrators. And the whole district suffers if we cannot provide that support. And so if we're short-staffed, if we don't have the adequate and appropriate resources for training, for implementing certain things like technology updates, then we're definitely, we're definitely at a loss for ourselves. And we're providing, we're going to be providing detrimental detrimental services or inadequate services to our students and the community. So what we're really asking for are fair wages, fair benefits and dignity for all our essential workers. And we trust that the board is going to provide some direction and guidance, you know, as we as we continue into our, I think, fourth date of negotiations. Thank you very much and have a great evening.
Thank you, Richard. Next we have Kwanah Rollins.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Kwanah Rollins and I am the campus steward at the College of Alameda. And I just wanted to ask you to consider the classified professionals as we enter into negotiations and just really think about the service that they perform, you know, on behalf of our students, you know, in addition to the counseling staff that we do employ. We serve as counselors, we serve as encouragers, you know, all these things before they even reach the classroom. So as we enter into these negotiations, I just ask that you consider the unsung heroes that are the classified professionals. Thank you.
Thank you. It looks like we've exhausted our speakers unless someone else would like to speak. If not, we're going to move forward. All right, Vice President, let's move on.
Thank you very much, trustee Jenkins. The next part of our meeting is the bulk of the meeting and that's a training on labor negotiations. We're pleased to have with this Laura Scholken and Rich Belanas from the firm of Librett Casti and Whitmore. They are widely recognized as, I was going to say a goddess and god among negotiation teams. And so we're really pleased to have their expertise here to help the board. I think it's clear that this board is deeply involved and board that's committed to the community. And finding that space where we bring community values to the negotiations, but also understand what we can and can't do in bringing that policy voice to negotiations is absolutely critical. I think every member of this board is committed to the integrity of that process and we want to know exactly what the bright line is and then where the soft lines are, where are the areas where it's like, well, that one's a little touchy, maybe we shouldn't do that, maybe it doesn't make sense strategically to do that and so forth. But I'm going to leave it to our experts to define those goals for us and and hand this over. And President Napoli Bellis, anytime you're back on, just let me know when your internet is good and I'm happy to hand the gavel back over to you. Attorney Scholken, you are up.
Thank you trustee and thank you for the promotion to immortal status. That's, that's very kind of you. Rick is not with me tonight. We did agree to this on a bit of short notice and he just could not move around his schedule. He is at a at another meeting, but I'm happy to hold down the fort on this and and happy to spend some time with you this evening. I do have an ask and I'm like any other group of folks that I'm training. I spend a lot of my time training and figuring out as many of your your employees have both academic and your classified professionals, which is figuring out how to replicate in this virtual setting, dynamic ways to communicate. I know that some of you are having connectivity issues and in that case I completely understand why your video is off. Otherwise, I would love to see the people in the room so that I I'm engaging with you and and I do expect this to be interactive. This is your time. So this is designed to be a dialogue. If you have questions, please just either raise your hand or your virtual hand. There's a small enough group in the room that I'm happy to do that once I get the slides up and and we'll do it that way. I have asked that the chat function be turned off. This is a public meeting. To me, that is tantamount to passing notes and should not be done during a public meeting of the board. So if you have questions, just let's have them out where the public is able to hear your deliberations. Okay? So with that, give me one second. I will put the slides up, give you a quick overview of what we're going to do today and then go right in. I just have to go to slideshow. Everyone can see the slides and the only, oh, the other thing I will say is once the slides are up, I can only see about three of you at once. So if you are raising your hand and I'm ignoring you, it's not that I'm being rude. It's that you're just not in my sightline. But if you're if you're vocal, you'll pop right up to the top. And again, we're a small enough group. You can say, hey, Laura, I have a question. That's fine.
I'll try to keep an eye on that as well, Ms. Scholken.
That would be extremely helpful, trustee. Thank you so much. That would just be great. So.
Actually, that just occurred to me if, at our last board meeting, I used a lot of gendered phrasing like Ms. and Mr. If people care to identify gender preferences as they speak, that would be extremely helpful. And so anyway, let me please let you continue.
Okay, happy to. And you actually set the stage very nicely trustee and some of the buzzwords that we like to hear. Integrity, listening to the community, understanding parameters while you do that, policy level vision. That's, those are the themes really. And and so you set the stage very well, what we're going to talk about tonight. But what I'm going to do is start with just a general review of the ERA, the Education Employment Rights Act. That is our labor relations statute. Just some of the key legal principles that inform the way we all have to conduct ourselves in negotiations. And then talk about what that looks like in terms of your particular role. Part of that is your relationship to your negotiation team. And and the way that you have a critical role in guiding your chief negotiator and team and setting parameters. So we'll spend some time on that key role. Then you have a role in certain procedural steps that are identified in the in the era that I want to make, just make sure you don't have any questions about. The process of sunshining, the process of impasse and the process of unilateral implementation. And then we'll spend time talking about avoiding what we all call a UPC, which is an unfair practice charge. And how do we avoid engaging in unfair labor practices as a district and how the board can help with that? And throughout this workshop, you'll see a lot of do's and don'ts language and that actually grows out of some thinking I've done over the years and the way I've shifted the way I do board development training, which I do quite a bit of around the state. And I realized listening to somebody else a number of years ago, presenting to a board, that it sounded like an hour-long scolding session. It was an hour of don'ts. And I thought, oh, gosh, that's what I sound like. And that's not how adults learn. It's not capacitating. And so I try to talk about the do's. And so this training will partly be about what are the things you can do as a board to be the effective visionary policy level leaders that you are and conduct that work with integrity within the context of labor relations. And then there are the don'ts to avoid unfair practices and protect the district from liability. But I like to balance those. So you'll hear both of those as we talk through. I have a couple of case studies at the end. I will be, I am respectful and mindful of your time. And this is a special meeting on a on a Tuesday evening. It may very well be that your questions get at those issues and we decide we don't need my pre-prepared, let's make sure you got all the main points case studies. But I have those to address some of the key issues at the end if we if we need them. Okay. So let's talk first about the ERA in general. This is the your NLRB, your MMBA. This is your labor relations statute for community colleges. It both regulates the community colleges and the K-12 districts. Just for your own information, if you've come from a K-12 district, this will look familiar. If you've come from the UCs or the CSU's, you're going to wonder, why aren't you under the Higher Education Employment Rights Act along with our other post-secondary institutions? I would say, good question. But for now, as in many areas, community colleges in the education code are sort of lumped together with the K-12s. For better or for worse, that's where we live in in many ways, including in labor relations. So we are regulated by the Education Employment Rights Act, which is at, which is what you can find in the government code. It requires covered local agencies to meet and negotiate in good faith over changes to wages, hours, employment and other terms and conditions of employment. Now, two key terms on this slide, which get a lot of discussion, a lot of review at PERB, the Public Employee Relations Board, the enforcement body for the era, and that inform your role in a number of ways. The first is the term good faith. We're to take a little time to talk about what does good faith really look like in negotiations? And then the other is other terms and conditions of employment. What does that mean? What are the things that are truly negotiable? Again, this is an area that gets a lot of attention and discussion and I'm going to go over that to some extent here. And I'll start with that. So other terms and conditions of employment has been given some contours by a case called Anaheim. And so it's referred to as the Anaheim Test. And this is the test that we use to apply to each very fact-specific situation to assess whether or not the issue under discussion or the issue of potential dispute is negotiable. And first is, is it logically and reasonably related to scope? So going back to this other slide for just a second, scope are wages, hours and terms and conditions of employment. So it's fairly, it's fairly straightforward. Is this something that will impact the working conditions of your employees? Is it likely to cause conflict and collective bargaining provide an appropriate means to resolve the conflict? Collective bargaining is a tool. It's something to be valued. It creates a platform for having productive conversations with unions. If it's done well, it's a place to find common ground. It's a place to be creative and it's a place to find solutions, right? So think of collective bargaining as a as a tool that both sides use to have conversations and resolve conflicts in a positive way. Okay? And then would negotiate, and then the last part of the test is negotiations would not abridge an employer's freedom to exercise managerial prerogatives essential to achieving the district's mission. So part of implementing the Anaheim Test involves understanding what is negotiable and also understanding what is a managerial right. And I'm going to stop here for a minute to point something out that I'm not going to talk about today, unless you want to stay here till midnight. And that is that managerial rights and in community colleges are complex. Because we operate within what I call a triangulated system. We have management and we have labor and we have a senate. In particular here, we're talking about the the academic senate. And so we're not done. Once we determine a matter is not subject to the terms and conditions of employment and therefore subject to mandatory negotiation. That does not mean ipso facto what we have left is a pure management right. Because what we have may very well be something that also requires a conversation with your with your academic senate because it touches on matters of academic expertise. So tonight what we're talking about is something binary, managerial rights versus subjects of negotiation. I just want to remind you that once you identify that something is not subject to bargaining, it doesn't mean that you are not having to confer with your employees. You have a shared governance process with your academic employees and your classified professionals that may require a dialogue before you exercise a managerial action as well. Okay? So that goes to this this other area for mandatory subjects of bargaining and that is where there is something that is a fundamental management decision footnote. This means it also is not subject to collegial consultation with your senate. But you have a pure managerial right. You still have a conversation that you may have to have with your unions before you exercise that managerial right. That occurs where the the decision is within the scope of management. But it will have an effect on terms and conditions of employment and that triggers what we call effects bargaining. Now for the the process for effects bargaining, what it generally should look like is management first makes a determination as to what it intends to do. And then it provides clear notice to the unions sufficient for them to evaluate whether or not that managerial action is going to impact the terms and conditions of employment. Once that is done, it is the obligation of the union to articulate in a fairly clear way what they see that impact to be and request to meet and negotiate. Once the union does that, except in certain emergency situations, the duty is to negotiate the effects before you implement the managerial action. In emergency situations, there are there are opportunities and and ways in which the district may act. And we saw that around the state as districts decided that they had to close their campuses. Right? But what you what you have to be careful not to do is to create your own emergency by waiting to provide notice to the unions until so late that you're sort of backed yourselves into a bit of a corner. So one of the themes that you'll hear throughout this is more communication is better than less. Transparency with with unions is is virtually always a good idea. And and trying to identify issues earlier rather than later. And troubleshooting are all important. Now let me give you a couple of concrete examples of what this this means. The typical one that we use, the generic one we kind of use because it's easy to understand is layoffs. The decision to reduce the workforce is a managerial right. Directing the size of the workforce. Directing the size of the workforce is not subject to negotiation. A layoff is non-negotiable. But it can have significant effects both on the employees that are laid off, issues around order of return may be negotiable, for example, and potential impacts on the employees that are, that remain. And how does the reduction of the workforce impact their workload, their work duties? All of that is potentially Alright. So that's the diff, that's how we, we make that effect. A, an example much closer to home for districts around the state. I'm going to apologize for a moment and I'm going to let you know, hold on. I do occasionally, especially in the evening, I think everyone's gotten home from wherever they are. I get a flag that my internet is also unstable. If I do get that notice, I will briefly put my camera on off video as well to, to, to improve my connection. Okay? And I just got one of the The, the, the more current example we grappled with was the, the pandemic. And districts had to make decisions to close their campuses and are now making decisions about whether or not they have the capacity to comply with the ever-evolving public safety orders and safely open their campuses. All of that is within the purview of management. What we're going to close, what we're going to open in terms of our physical plants and what employees are going to be designated as essential, which employees are going to be working from home, which employees cannot be assigned work at the moment because their work cannot be migrated online. All of these have been very, very challenging issues for the most part within the purview of management. But they have all had profound impacts, profound impacts on our employees. Both the issues about how to work from home, everything from access to technology, training, and our employees that have been asked to stay in the workforce, the workplace. You, you, you know, I, I was pleased to be able to listen to public comment before this, this session. And your classified professionals who, many of whom stayed on campus throughout and did this work affect their safety issues and other things. All of those are potentially negotiable if the union seeks to negotiate them. So that's a very concrete, much more recent example of how we thread the needle between what is inherent management right, the duty to provide notice of that and negotiate the, the potential effects that are identified clearly by the unions before implementing, except in an emergency. Okay? And then the second of those key themes that I identified in that first slide of the ERA is the duty to bargain in good faith. What does good faith mean? Well, there are certain things that are not required. We are not obligated to agree. Right? We may fundamentally disagree on a point and not be able to reach agreement. That can happen. We don't want to get there, but it can happen. There's that, the corollary to that, there's not an obligation to make concessions and bargaining. And so hard bargaining is allowed. We can reach a point of where we say, we have, we have no further counters on this. We have no further authority. We have nothing left to give on this. Right? But what good faith does mean is that we are explaining the reasons for our positions. And explaining them in ways that are genuine, patient, transparent, creative, listening, look, identifying common interests. You, your your district teams and your union teams have expressed a commitment to engage in interest-based bargaining at the table, which means that particular, there's we are looking to find common interests and common ground and use that to drive the negotiations forward rather than positional bargaining.
Laura, can you repeat that? You were going in and out. Can you repeat that?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Thank you, trustee Handy. I'm going to turn my video off again. And please let me know if I am, if, if my internet is getting bad again.
Thank you.
Acknowledging, of course, I was acknowledging that the, the ERA does not mention interest-based bargaining or address that within the statute. But you, as a district, utilize interest-based bargaining when you are negotiating your full contracts. Not when you're doing your, your reopeners, but when your full contracts are open. And, and that has its own internal expectations that sort of provide contours for good faith bargaining around active listening, finding common ground, operating from a place of identified common interest rather than what we call positional bargaining, which is, you know, this sort of much more strategic positioning in the bargaining process. None of which is illegal, but some of that might run counter to your internal processes because you've committed to interest-based bargaining. And that also involves good faith consideration to employee demands and proposals. That we are actively listening to those, thinking about them in creative ways, understanding where our employees are coming from, when they make their presentations, and that we are understanding them before we respond. The ERA also defines what we call unfair labor practice charges. And these are to be avoided. They are time-consuming. They are damaging to labor relations over time. And prevention is far better than the cure. Right? And so a charge that alleges a violation of the ERA can include, and I put in, I'll explain in a second why I've, I've put the first two bullets in red. But failure to bargain in good faith, which I just identified, direct dealing, interference with employee and association rights as defined under the Act, the ERA, interference with or attempt to dominate or to discriminate among employee organizations. There are, under the ERA, a set of procedures that regulate the relationship between competing unions that are really not our purview and we, as management, do not get involved in. Unit modification petitions, certification and decertification petitions. All of those are also managed by the Public Employee Relations Board. But we don't get involved in those. How unions define and organize themselves is the purview of unions. They can run into conflicts with each other, but we step out of those. If we attempt to interfere with a, a, a vote process, a certification process, if we try to prefer one union over another, that is all an unfair labor practice. We are, we are supposed to stay completely out of those processes. And then finally, the refusal to participate in impasse procedures is considered an unfair labor practice. Now, the reason I bulleted the first two red is because those are the ones where in particular boards can play a positive role to support our, our compliance and positive labor relations. And birds, and boards can engage in missteps that constitute violations or put your teams in, in danger of committing violations. So those are the two we'll spend our, most of our time on today unless you have questions. And those are your role in promoting good faith bargaining or unwittingly undermining good faith bargaining. And your, your duty to help the district avoid the unfair practice of direct dealing. And that's what we'll be spending a little more time when we get into the board's role. Whether or not a party, either the union or the district has engaged in bad faith is usually determined by what we call the totality of the circumstances. There are a few things that are per se bad faith, right out of the box. But for the most part, we're looking at a totality of the circumstances. And the types of things that are red flags are, one, surface bargaining. What is surface bargaining? Surface bargaining is you're meeting, you go to all the meetings, but you're not prepared. You don't, you're not ready to counter. You don't say, the representatives lack authority, meeting after meeting. So we're friendly enough, we chit chat, but we're stalling. That is surface bargaining. If we come to the table without authority to negotiate and that bogs down the negotiations, it can become an unfair labor practice. Start thinking, by the way, about how the way we interact with the board and, and the board role can either support or undercut our obligations in these areas. That's what I'll be touching on in a little bit. Take it or leave it proposals can be, are, are, are an indicator of bad faith. We're not listening. We're not considering. We're not providing reasons. Right? Dilatory ta- ta- tactics, delay tactics, repeatedly canceling negotiations, adopting ground rules around the scheduling of meetings and then violating our ground rules. Bypassing the designated representative. That is what we call direct dealing. So the union enjoys the right and the status of being the sole designated representative of the members of its bargaining unit. That is the role of the union, is to speak for the employees. And when we go to an individual employee to discuss terms and conditions of employment, that's an unfair labor practice. Even if the individual employee is perhaps even appreciative of the discussion, it, it undermines the authority and of, of, of the union itself. So direct dealing can come up in a variety of contexts. It can come up where a supervisor sits down with a group of employees and says, let's organize our own calendar that makes more sense to this unit. That's an unfair labor practice. Even if the particular employees in that unit appreciate the flexibility that an individual supervisor is, is trying to offer. Why? Because the calendar and the work year are mandatory subjects of bargaining and therefore they must be negotiated directly with the unit. What it also means, and this is in the specific context of this workshop, which is labor negotiations, that while we are in active negotiations, the only place that offers are traded back and forth, terms are discussed, is at the bargaining table, not away from the table with individual employees. Right? That is bypassing the designated representative. We'll talk about that as well. Withdrawal of prior agreements or what we call regressive bargaining is an unfair labor practice or, or can be a red flag of an unfair practice, part of the totality. So withdrawals or regressive proposals as negotiation continues. That would be either withdrawing the proposal or modifying it in ways that are significant and are taking back things that were already offered. All of these can be indicators of bad faith. So what's the board's role in what I would say, supporting healthy, productive labor relations, the positive part of it? How can you play a role in helping that process be a positive one? As well as, that's going to be the do's, as well as the don'ts. How do, how, what do you need to refrain from doing? So that we are not put in the position of committing an unfair labor practice and creating liability for the district. Okay? So one big category, we're going to spend several slides on, is your role in giving direction to your team, to your district negotiators, in particular, your, your chief negotiator. So how you give guidance, where, when, what information you need in order to perform your role and how to get it? That is one of the critical areas of, of board role that we're, we'll be talking about. Then there are certain procedures that the ERA requires that parties engage in, in particular, that I'm talking about here, the district, where the board necessarily plays a role. One is the sunshining of proposals, which must be at a public meeting of the board. So obviously that involves the board because the sunshining must occur at your public meeting, and that's both the district and the union proposals. And then there are certain final decisions that all run through the board. There is the ultimate approval of the contract after it is ratified by your, by the union's membership. The decision to declare impasse. If we go to impasse, it must be on board authority. And the ultimate, the ultimate power. It may not feel that way sometimes, but the ultimate power does rest with the district. It is, it is a hammer that we are very loathe to use, that that is imposition. And that is the right to impose your last best and final offer. If you reach that point, that is also a decision of the Board of Trustees. Not of, not of district administration. Okay? So those are the, the, the key areas where the board has role. So how to, how do, how do, how to do this effectively? First, we, and these are best practice pieces now, right? This is not embedded in, in the government code. But that you meet early on in the process. One of the mantras for any chief negotiator on, on matters of, of broad policy and, and fiscal decision-making is not to get ahead of the board. Don't want to ever get out there ahead of a Board of Trustees. Right? So we want to get in early. Talk to the board, hear your priorities, hear what your concerns and questions are. Make sure you're, you've received the data that you need in order to adequately guide the board. Don't forget that this is a, a closed session item. It must be listed as such under pursuant to Government Code 54957.6. This is, that is part of your Brown Act. I think it's very important for your board president to really corral the board on this one and make sure that you have full attendance at your meetings where you are going to be giving a guidance to your chief negotiator. Why? Because what we're concerned about as your negotiating team and now we're thinking ahead to prevention of unfair labor practices is that we are going to the table with full authority, that we are not ever in a position where we might be regressively bargaining. And so what we, what gives us assurance is to know that when we receive authority, the entire board is present and either agrees or understands that a majority of the trustees have given direction within certain parameters to take certain steps. That avoids those backtracking meetings where trustees who weren't present have concerns and raise them, thinking of the board shifts. And if the board is bouncing around, then you're making us bounce around. And once we start bouncing around, we start potentially committing unfair labor practices. So consistency in board guidance is so important for our work. So having everybody there so that you, your collective memory of what guidance has been given, what the direction of the board is, is very helpful to your negotiating team. For the same reason, it's important to have the key members of your team present to hear your guidance. So we've all heard it and we are really clear on any parameters that you're setting. That means whoever you've designated as your chief negotiator, internal or external in this case. you're the, you're a, you're head of or a chief member of your human resources team, your CBO critically important, critically important in those meetings. Those are the folks you definitely want at those closed sessions where you're giving direction. And that you are throughout embracing and encouraging fiscal transparency. Absolutely essential to our effectiveness as negotiators is that we're operating from a place of shared trust in the underlying numbers and shared understanding of underlying numbers. Right? So what should be happening in closed session is strategizing, guidance, evaluating scenarios. What's happening in open session is the presentation of all of the fiscal data that's utilized to build potential scenarios or build potential parameters that are discussed in closed. A good rule of thumb is that a Board of Trustees should not be hearing budget information for the first time in closed session. All of that should be happening in open session first. Closed session is where you strategize around that information, not where you hear it. Okay, so meeting early in the process is both those, that, those early closed sessions, but making sure that in particular, in years where you're negotiating compensation, which in many districts is every year, although it's, that's something I really try to get away from if possible. And in years when your whole contract is open, you're making sure, this is a conversation perhaps between a board president and a chancellor as you are building and planning meetings and ensuring that administrative reports are being presented in ways that are useful to the board and helping you shape a policy, that budget reviews, budget sessions are being appropriately timed in ways that you're not hearing information so late in a process that you feel unable to make decisions in the timeframe that your team wants you to because you're still digesting a lot of fiscal information. So the timing of public disclosures and sharing of fiscal information and doing that early and front loading that is also very helpful to your team's effectiveness at the table. And so you, the job of the board in negotiations, I don't want to, my intention here, and I want to make sure it doesn't get interpreted this way, is not to suggest that you're, that you are sidelined. But you are at 30,000 feet. That's a very important place to be. It's an important place. Right? What is the institutional climate? Do you have particular goals or direction for your chief negotiator team over labor relations? A district board that has just come out of a bloody negotiation cycle and an impasse and imposition may have a very specific set of negotiation directions for healing that they want to see happen. A board that feels that there is a critical area that must be addressed may have a deal breaker discussion that says, we are not going to reduce our reserves. You have no authority to do anything that's going to implicate that. Or they may say, this is one area we feel very strongly about and we want to see any compensation deals ready to address those. And by the way, if anybody is wondering, I am of course speaking completely hypothetically here without any consideration for what may or may not be on the table at Peralta. This is a training session only and I'm being completely hypothetical. Right? So you're establishing parameters, setting broad expectations. Very helpful for your negotiators to know this as we're going into negotiations. So you're determining the goals and bargaining approach, establishing financial limits, focusing on policy and vision, leaving those operating details to staff. I'll tell you that unless I get a very specific direction from a board, I generally do not go to the board with terms that we're negotiating that are purely operational without any demonstrable economic impact. Because they go so much to the specialization over administration. So certain things, those I tend not to bring to the board unless they ask me to. Modifications through evaluation process, I would not necessarily bring to the board early on unless I was making a substantial change that impacted policy or the board's level of review, that I would certainly bring back to the board. So what all of this may suggest to you is that the board has a very special relationship with its chief negotiator. It's a unique confidential relationship. It should be founded in trust. The communications occur mostly in closed session. I am talking to you today in open session because this is a training around the law and best practices. It is not a communication to give your negotiator guidance. So this is an appropriate open session, but those are rare. For the most part, the discussion is in closed session. And then please remember that when you are in closed session, those communications are confidential and sacrosanct. This isn't Brown Act training. I won't go on and on about, you know, the Brown Act interprets very narrowly what should go into closed session. But once you are legally there, it is to be protected. Right? And that's true for any closed session, but here to discuss or disclose the, what has occurred in closed session cripples the district's ability to engage in negotiations. And both in terms of our, the positions that we're taking and, and I do think part of the board's job is to help, not only, is to help foster the, the union team confidence in the district's chosen negotiator. That they understand that your negotiator has your support as the board and that that is where issues and terms need to be hammered out and you trust your negotiator to do that. And when, when that stops happening, it has a downward spiraling effect because the loss of confidence in your chief negotiator from your labor team causes them to become ineffectual, which then causes the union to reach out to others more and more. That makes us less ineffectual and now we're, now we're going in a downward spiral. So a few of these, you know, affirmative do's and a couple of the don'ts, you know, around your relationship with your chief negotiator. Absolutely, you should expect from your chief negotiator that your negotiator will seek input on negotiable items before crafting and presenting offers, especially ones that have fiscal impact or broad policy or institutional impacts. That you can, it's appropriate to expect your chief negotiator to provide updates and feedback on a regular basis to the board. And we want to do that to make sure we're not getting out ahead of you. And you expect your chief negotiator to represent the district. And the, you know, trustee Wenz comments early on about integrity of the board. You also expect that of your chief negotiator, that your negotiator acts with integrity, treats your labor representatives with professionalism and respect, does not commit unfair practices, et cetera. What you should not be doing is stepping into the negotiations yourself, either formally or informally, or advocating publicly for any particular position. And I want to stop and talk about that for just a minute. When I do board governance training, board efficacy training, I call it. I talk about, and I'm just talking about briefly here, we won't spend a lot of time on it. But the unique animal that is a community college trustee. You are a very unique kind of elected official, like none other. You are, you are elected by constituents, you are elected by a trustee area. But you are also, you are nonpartisan and you are a trustee. And the, the role of being an elected official answerable to a constituency base and a trustee area, taxpayers, right? Is not always a completely aligned and comfortable fit with your legal duties as a trustee, as a fiduciary caretaker of and responsible for the whole of the district itself. Where I believe that your ultimate legal duty is to the accreditation and solvency of the institution. Because if it ceases to exist, then nobody is served. And then of course, your ultimate duty to, to the success and inclusion of your students. What this means is that you carry with you as an elected official core First Amendment rights to speak your views, share your positions with the public. Trustees are elected on platforms, pro labor platforms, pro management platforms. You're, you make known in deliberations your views on a variety of issues. All of that is entirely appropriate and protected. But once we are in the land of labor negotiations, you have to balance that with your overall duty to the well-being of the district itself and protecting it from liability and protecting its ability to engage in effective negotiations. So when labor negotiations are actively open, I do not believe trustees should be speaking out on their particular positions on items that are under negotiation that they favor one proposal over another. Or they propose, right, it, it undercuts our ability to negotiate effectively on behalf of the district. And I think in balancing trusteeship with elected officialship, that's where that balance lands in my view. Okay? Now, chief negotiators are typically the ones who are responsible for communicating with their respective constituents. So it is the role of the chief negotiator for your unions to be the primary ones who communicate with their members. We'll talk in a minute about when it may be appropriate to speak directly to employees about matters within negotiations. And I'm going to tell you to do that very rarely and cautiously and to respect the role of the union in communicating with its own members. And by the same token, your chief negotiator is primarily responsible for communicating with management over, over offers as well. So do make sure that you have a basic understanding of the key negotiation issues. And if you don't, then tell your chief negotiator or your team that you need additional information to be able to guide on the matters where you're being asked to provide guidance. Ask for talking points if there are particularly contentious items. And I want to be clear here as well, the recommendation that you ask for talking points and that you use vetted, prepared responses to approaches by unions or the press is not to control your views. It's not to control your expression of your views. It's to make sure that you are not inadvertently disclosing confidential information. So we need to do a check to make sure that, that, that a personal comment is not disclosing a closed session strategy or information that is presented in a confidential way in order to protect those negotiations. Okay? And a bit of a broken record here, but don't speak about negotiations publicly, privately, formally, or informally unless agreed to by the district and the board as a whole. Now, the board as a body can waive privileges, it can waive confidentiality protections if the board itself as a whole wishes to do that, but not any individual trustee. Right? Should be careful around that. So ask questions. And remember that, you know, negotiations, I'll see, I have another slide on this in a minute. They can be very complicated with many issues. An entire contract can be open, or they can be very narrow, a single item negotiation, for example, compensation. Don't just assume that what you know from experience applies. Negotiation context and terms change over time, change negotiation to negotiation. So please do ask questions if you do have questions about the current negotiation cycle. And be careful not to focus on any one issue to the exclusion of others because negotiations are so fluid. The other thing around focusing in on any one issue, and I talked to managers about this as well, who are not at the bargaining table. Remember, as you're providing guidance, focusing in on various issues, that negotiations, the dynamics at the table are a dynamic of give and take, is a dynamic of compromise. And sometimes what happens is your team is at the table and we are fully engaged in a process of creative solution, strategizing and compromise and give and take with the union. The people who are away from the table aren't watching that process and they are still stuck on what our opening offer was going to be. And we come back and say, here's where we've landed. We think this works for everybody. And the folks who haven't been at the table, whether it's our trustees or other managers go, you agree to what? Because they're, they're not clued in to how much give and take goes into settling a contract. So just remember that issues are not negotiated in isolation. They're contextual, there's give and take. And just be, just be cognizant that that's kind of part of the process that's going on at the table when you're hearing updates from your negotiators.
Laura?
Yes.
At what point would you like to address any questions that have come up along the way?
I like to address them as they happen so that they're relevant. And I just can't see any hands raised because I can only see two or three people on the screen at once. But I'm, unless we are, you know, really running up against our time.
Let me, let me pause this for a second and just see whether anybody, I know I have a question, but I want to see whether there are any of my colleagues on the board who would like to pause, make comment, ask a question. Like any good learning session, this is probably a moment to take a breath.
Yeah.
And give you a moment to pause. Are there colleagues who have comments or questions? I'm seeing President Reese, are you, are you back?
Yes, I am back. I am back. So, hi Laura.
You the gavel?
Sure, sure. Not officially. Okay, sounds good. And I also, I think that entertaining questions would be very good, but I also want to make sure that we have enough time for Laura to go through everything that she has. So we want to be conscious and aware of the time that it takes to have an interactive dialogue because we are at 7:30, 28. So Nikki, if you have a question for sure. But I want us all to be aware of the time and I don't know how much more Laura has to do because this has been so helpful thus far, for sure.
Okay, I'm officially handing you the gavel and asking to be recognized.
Okay, Laura, you're good with, with one question because I don't see anybody else's hand up.
Absolutely.
Okay, go for it, Nikki.
Great. Look, it's no secret that this board is a pro labor board. It's no secret that virtually every member of this board gets elected with the support of organized labor. We're all working people, et cetera. I think, you know, the East Coast progressive place. We take public policy positions that are often progressive. I've been a faculty member for over thirty years. I've been a member of the California Part Time Faculty Association, a dues paying member for decades. And so my position on part time pay parity is no big secret. At the same time, I don't think that the rest of the board's position on pay parity is a big secret. I think that this board publicly was saying, yes, we want pay parity. Let's negotiate pay parity. And we were in the middle of negotiations on pay parity. That issue is now settled, it's behind us. I don't think I'm violating Brown Act in talking about a thing that is now settled.
I would still, just to be cautious.
I'll be cautious about it.
About anything about closed session, just.
Absolutely. You were saying, you think it's a bad idea to opine publicly on something that is under negotiation. And I might, and now I want to just ask, all right, there's a question of law and then there's a question of strategy. And I'd like you to make the distinction here because one might say, look, you give your negotiator a lot of rope to play with, you give them general policy direction, you say, we'd like you to negotiate pay parity, let's say. And then how they go about doing that is what they're doing. But is it, in that setting, would it be in any way a violation of any law for a board member such as myself, a known supporter of part time pay parity, to publicly say, yeah, I believe this is in the interests of the district. This is in the fiduciary interests of the district. This is good for students, this is good for everybody. And as a matter of public policy, I support that, yes. Is there anything illegal about that? That's the first question. Because I want to make sure that we understand the distinction between what's good negotiation, what's board policy? And then what's the law where you go, uh, 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 you can't break the Brown Act, that's against the law. But it might be a bad thing to call somebody a name in public. Okay, that's not against the law, but it's bad form, you wouldn't want to do it. Is this simply bad form in your opinion, or is this actually a legal requirement?
So I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to sound a little bit like a lawyer for a second, but then I, then I, I, I won't dodge the, the question. But the legal answer is it depends.
Okay.
And, and let me, let me, but I'll, let me tell you what I think it depends on. I, I, I think that without more, the way you just described it, stating a broad position on a, a, a subject like parity pay is not illegal. Okay. Here's where I would start to become concerned from a legal perspective. And I appreciate the distinction you're making. First of all, I would call best practices more than just strategy and negotiations. I think that the dichotomy I'm drawing is not just between being positional and strategic versus legal. It's between the law and best practices. Best practices cover a whole host of things that I think could be implicated by such a statement and could potentially involve a legal violation. If the comment relies upon and communicates information learned in closed session, suggests what closed session deliberations have been about, signals what the board has directed in closed session, that would start to worry me. Okay, so the way the comments are made, what gets said could signal what the board is telling your chief negotiators to do in closed session. That, I think, becomes a potential Brown Act violation. These are subtle, right? There is also, so that's one concern. There's also what becomes a communication with, with employees around negotiations. And this is one of the biggest governance challenges for boards, whether we're talking about labor negotiations or anything else. And that is that your constituents, who also happen to be your employees, you have a different relationship with them than you do from any other potential constituent because they are your employees. You get to hire them, fire them, decide how much you're going to pay them, describe their jobs. So your relationship to your employees is unique, right? And so you may have a general sense that you're elected by an electorate that, that has the right to know what your position is on key issues. But if those communications end up being, in some sense, a roundabout way to say to the employees, here's my position and why you should agree with it or not, or this is the district's position, that can start to potentially look like direct dealing with the employees themselves. So if a trustee said, I completely support the idea of parity. And let me tell you, I bet that if the union were to come back with a proposal for parity, but gave us, and again, I'm taking completely hypothetically and I have, I was not involved in your parity discussions. If there's similarity with my hypotheticals that I invent, coincidence, and that, and that, and that I've done this in a lot of districts and have a lot of examples to draw on. But if a trustee said, look, I bet if the union came back and said, okay, parity, but we'll give you a timeline to get there of blank years, I bet the district would be okay with it. That now you're, you now you're dangerously in the land of negotiating away from the table and suggesting what the district might agree to or not agree to. So, so what you say, while there's active, and I'm only talking about while we're actively in negotiations. We have an open negotiations, then I'm not seeking to constrain how you describe your views on a whole range of labor or other issues. I'm just talking about what, while the contract is open and we're actively at the table. So I think that you have to take great care in what you say so that it is not suggesting where the negotiation should go, what the district might or might not find acceptable. That, that implies what has, what direction has been given in closed session. Those are things that I think do potentially run into illegal territory, either under the Brown Act or under the ERAs. Okay.
And let me just come back and, and, and let me, let me give you an example of a hypothetical. I don't think this happened, but here's a hypothetical.
You know, Nikki, I'm, I'm going to intervene a little bit because again, I just want to be conscious of time.
You know what, we're good.
Yeah, and then we can go back to it after.
I can talk to Laura anytime.
Yeah, that would be fantastic. And if we have time at the end, then let's do that.
Right, and I, and I often say, you know, these, these trainings are a platform for, you know, the future. This is, you know, and a part of your ongoing discussion. So I, so thank you for, for watching. I appreciate that.
And I, I appreciate the intelligence and the subtlety of the, of the communication back. Thanks. Keep going, please. And Cindy, you are now in charge.
Okay, so, so we're talking about this relationship you have with your negotiators. So embrace your primary responsibilities to your taxpayers and students. Be careful that you're not favoring or giving the appearance of doing so or negotiating with unions behind the scenes. So these are, I'm, I'm saying sort of the same thing in, in slightly different ways around, around, around the role. And then a couple of summaries around that. Please ask for guidance if you anticipate being approached by unions or the press. And again, this is not to control your expression of your views, but to protect from a, a, just for improper disclosure of, or direct dealing. And speak about the negotiations publicly. These are the things that you are learning about in closed session. And then, as I mentioned earlier, negotiations are complex. So we do want to make sure that you're getting an understanding of the key negotiation issues and that you feel well informed and that's the responsibility of your team. Please rely on the data from your CBO, your human resources and other administrators. These are your core information source. This is also how you engage in that best practice of ensuring that all trustees are operating from the same information and the same sources of information. If you have concerns about the quality of the information that you are getting, that is a conversation to have with your chancellor. Right? Not with somebody outside of your, of, of, of administration. I think if you're not happy with the information, have a conversation with your chancellor. Let's get an understanding of what it is that you feel is missing. And so we can get it to you and that you are relying on your administration. That is why you've hired them. Is to rely on their expertise. Okay. And then don't focus on any issue in isolation. I think I talked about that earlier, I won't, I won't belabor it here. A couple of things that you, you also, another key, key person in this is your chief business officer. And your relationship there is also very important to your efficacy as, as the, the overall guide in the negotiations. So we want to make sure that you understand what the short term and the long term consequences are for the scenarios being contemplated. Make sure that you're, you're establishing as a board, shared understanding of budgetary and fiscal facts. So you can guide as a board and speak with one voice to the extent that you can when you're guiding the board in closed session. The chancellor provides recommendations and facilitates dialogue and consistent and routine communications and updates. Maintain professionalism and decorum. These are all the things that you want to, want to do and, and what your CBO is, is looking for. Try not to become inflexible or entrenched. Keep in mind that most of the time there are multiple ways to accomplish the same goal. So we try to operate with creativity, flexibility and agility as we listen to and try to respond to the information and concerns that are expressed by the union bargaining team. And so we need that same flexibility and agility from the board when we come to you or view data in isolation because it is complex. So those are the relationship pieces and overall guidance pieces in terms of board role. You also have certain specific roles related to processes that are identified within the ERA. The first of them is the sunshining of both the district and the union proposals. Those must occur at open meetings. We are obligated, this is both the district and the unions, to provide public notice of our proposals. That we are precluded from negotiating until a reasonable time after notice. So we are often, we have to do a lot of reverse timelining in negotiations, right? If we want to be at the table by May, that means we need to be sunshining in April. And we are going to need potentially two meetings, which means, let's look at our meeting schedule. That means that we're coming to the board in March, maybe it's even February, depending on the, a particular board's schedule, whether they meet once or twice a month. Are we going to need, you know? So there's a lot of reverse timelining because we're tied to the meeting schedules of our, of our boards to make sure things get done, in particular with sunshine. I've been in situations where a district is imagining that it's going to be at the table in April. And, and I'm, and I realize this as I'm called to assist or to give some advice and nothing's been sunshine yet. And we look at the board's calendar and realize we can't finish the sunshine process until May, which means you're not negotiating till June. So the process for sunshining and making sure that we've got it calendared is really important. And the purpose of sunshining is to give the public the opportunity to be informed on the matters that will be negotiated and express their views. And then the district adopts the proposal at the public meeting. And then if new things come up during negotiations, we realize, oh, oh, there's an article we're negotiating that cross references an article that we didn't think to sunshine, but we really do need to sunshine it to have a holistic discussion of this issue. That's fine, we can always go back and, and sunshine later, we're not precluded from doing that. And then there's the processes that arise if the parties have not been able to reach an agreement. And, and this has to do with the process for declaring impasse. Impasse needs to be declared by the board of trustees, right? This is, this is one of those times where we would never get out ahead of a board. And if we come to a board and say, we're at the end of the line, we have gone back and forth and back and forth. We, we don't have any more authority from you, the union hasn't moved, we think it's time to bring in a mediator. Our job is to make sure that you are not shocked by that information. Right? If we're at impasse, then it means we've already come to you and alerted you that we are approaching the end of our authority. Ask if we have any more authority from you to give. So you should be well aware before that meeting that says, we think it's time. Do we have authority to propose impasse to the union or declare impasse? It should not be a surprise to you. Generally, i- i- if, if, I think the best way to go to impasse, just so you know what it looks like, is mutually with a union. And generally, what I would say, and I've, I have avoided having to go to mediation, is to say, maybe we need the help of a third party, somebody from the outside to help us see these issues with fresh eyes. And let's mutually pick a mediator that we think can help us. So I think that the first stage of impasse can be approached in a way that still communicates, we still want to have a conversation, we've just run out of things to say right now and we need somebody to help us. The next stage is what's called fact finding. And that is where a determination is made that mediation isn't helping, in which case you can go to a fact finding hearing. And then the fact finding hearing is held before a panel of three. One neutral, one person picked by the union, one person picked by the district. And that fact finding panel only makes a recommended decision. It is ultimately up to the board to decide whether to accept the determination of the fact finding panel or not. You do have the ultimate authority to impose the last best and final offer. Again, a, a place that you want to avoid, the, the, the collateral damage is significant. It, sometimes it, it's where you need to go, but the collateral damage is, is significant in terms of labor relations.
I have a question here.
Yeah, sure.
Cindy?
I, yes, let me see, what time are we at? We are at seven forty seven. I think that I just saw a hand up earlier before you. So let's do Linda and then let's do Nikki. And then again, if we could get right to the question without all of the context before or after, it helps us efficiently get through the questions. Linda?
Okay, my comment was back to where we were talking before. But I think that we have to be really clear. We're, you know, many of us are pro-union, my brother was a labor leader for ten twenty one. It was seven ninety then, I was a, a labor candidate. But that doesn't change the fact that it is never my job to dis- But that doesn't change the fact that it is never my job to discuss negotiations or to be in inappropriate situations. Because it does impact. You are a trustee. Anything that you say or do is going to be considered inside track information or whatever. And we always have to beware of that. And that's, I'm bringing this up because we have, we have new trustees. This is why it's a, it's a shaky line when you're engaging in those activities, when you're constantly being invited to attend union functions and things, because when you're new, you've got to be really careful. Because there's a reason for that. That's not something that we engage in. We're trustees and we have to keep it separate and honest so that we can work in the best interest. And everything else should be the negotiator, not us. And, and then that, I mean, it's brought to us and that's where the discussion comes. Those were my comments.
Okay, Nikki?
Thanks. Quick question on impasse. If the district, in order for the district to go to impasse, must it actually have a vote of the board to say, yes, we are at impasse? At what point do you as a negotiator say, yeah, we're at impasse? You come to the board and say, we're at impasse. I need your, your support to go to fact finding, impasse, et cetera? Or? Yeah, what, who holds the power there? The legal power in relationship to impasse?
I would say that is a fundamental responsibility of the Board of Trustees.
So that if an administration or negotiator wanted to go to fact finding, they would come and say, we are stuck. I need your support to go to impasse. And that would be an affirmative step that, that the administration would have to do in order to be authorized to go to impasse and fact finding?
I believe that I'm, I don't think it's embedded in the law that the, that impasse must be authorized by a Board of Trustees.
Okay, it's more of a best practice.
But I, I'm not, but I think I, I, I'm hard pressed to imagine an administration going to impasse without the approval of the board. Now this, I don't think this is a fight, this is not an action that you announce out of closed session and the board is, you know, necessarily, but, but that you do have the authority of the board in closed session, you go in. So what I've done is I have gone into closed session with boards to say, okay, we have a negotiation session coming up next week. We've gone back six times, back and forth across the table. Neither side has shown every, any movement. I'm coming back to you, board, one more time to say, are you really ready for me to declare impasse? Or do you have anything else to give me? And the board will say, we've got nothing left to give you. You're okay to go to impasse. It's part of the guidance that you're giving your negotiator. I'm not, I don't think it's a, it has to be a formal vote or an action that's announced out of closed session. The board has now declared impasse. I don't imagine it as a formal action that way, but that your negotiator is not acting within the authority that they've been given to declare, to declare impasse if they haven't gotten the direction from the board to do so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Laura?
And just to be clear on terminology, that's the only thing that the, the, the union or the district declares is that's impasse. We don't declare fact finding. The mediator declares fact finding because they have determined that we have, we have exhausted mediation.
Thank you. That's a helpful distinction.
Okay, back to you, Laura.
Thanks. So, so in turn, the, and if you do end up unilaterally implementing, imposing your last best and final, there are certain, there's a checklist of steps that you also have to make sure are followed, that the district did negotiate in good faith before taking that step, that impasse procedures were exhausted. That includes both mediation and fact finding. That you did return to the table if impasse is broken before, right? Anytime impasse is broken, anytime there's any movement, you go back to square one and you start negotiating again. That's the process. That you've notified the union of your intention to impose. You've given the union the opportunity to address the governing body in public session beforehand. You ensure that the governing body has complied with the Brown Act. And then you prepare for concerted activity. Because that is the union's final authority. Your final authority is to impose. The union's final authority is to engage in concerted activity. Okay. So what is your role in avoiding an unfair practice charge? And there are two pieces I want to talk about. One is direct dealing, which we've actually, I think we've actually touched on a fair amount. And I'll go through this part fairly quickly again, in the interest of time, unless you want me to tap the brakes. The second, though, we've talked less about, and that's surface bargaining and the, how the board can help us avoid that. So direct dealing, going directly to employees with proposals, with terms, and not allowing those conversations to play out at the bargaining table where they belong. We have to be careful around that. So as we've said, I won't belabor it. I think we discussed it more fully early on because of the questions I received. So I don't think we have to address it here. Trustee Handy had a very thoughtful contribution, which I agree with. And that is that individuals have the right to speak to elected officials. So not only is it a matter of you speaking and your rights, but your elected officials, your constituents have the right to speak to you. But you do have to avoid this direct dealing. So as you're approached by the union, you have to be careful that you're not circumventing the table or violating the ground rules that have been established. So there may be confidentially confidentiality ground rules that were established that limit the ways in which and with whom we can communicate over negotiations or over the offers that are being made across the table. You have to make sure that you are adhering to the internal ground rules that the union and the district mutually establish in negotiations. And then we have to be careful about the way you communicate with bargaining unit members. In addition to making sure that you are complying with the ground rules. If any communications by management away from the table. So this is, this is a restriction on, on district administration as well as the board. This is not about your particular role as trustees, but anyone in management. And that's what you are, the ultimate managers of the district, is to refrain from anything that is a communication that either implies that you are willing to talk individually with employees about terms, that involves any kind of a reprisal or threat or coercion against employees. Well, if we go down that road, that's fine, but then get ready for your layoff notice. Sure, we'll give you those raises, but get ready for your pink slip. You know, that, that off the cuff might sound like a okay comment, but it really isn't. It's, 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 it's threatening. And so we have to be careful about the way we talk away from the table. What is permissible, if it's not against the ground rules that you've mutually established, is sharing information that is accurate and factual account of the negotiations. When we've met, what the offers have been, what the counter offers are. That, that sometimes violates ground rules, in which case we should not be doing that either. But there's nothing in the ERA that would prohibit that type of factual communication. That said, I, I still think it's something you want to be very careful about. It get factual, no threats, no promises. You're not circumventing the negotiations themselves. And it's not a violation of ground rules. But I do think that it is disruptive to the negotiations. It's disruptive to for the most part, in my experience. Unions do perceive this as an intrusion upon their special relationship with their members. And, and any thing that, that causes friction at the table doesn't helmet. Sorry, my, my internet just got unstable again. I'm going to turn off my video for a minute. Right? So I, I usually, these conversations come up when, when negotiations have gotten unpleasant. And the, a district becomes frustrated because the information that they, that the union is providing is information that the district believes is inaccurate. The district has been described as having made no movement for two months and we actually believe we have. Or that we've repeatedly canceled negotiations when in fact, the negotiations were canceled as often by the union as by us. And administrators can get really frustrated by that and want to go out and tell their side of the story. And I mean, those are very factual situations to evaluate. Most often, I suggest not doing it. Because the reality is, is that, is that members will be more likely to believe and rely on the information from their union officials anyway. So we haven't convinced anybody, but alienated union leadership in the process. And that doesn't really help us much at the table. So I rarely have seen a situation where I think a direct communication out to members is productive. And it's most effective when it's simply part of an ongoing communication system that exists when skies are blue as well as when they're gray. So it's not associated with a wanting to provide your side of the story when things have gotten tense at the table. So we, we talked a little bit before about public statements and being open about one's general views perhaps on an issue under negotiations. But that I said that those could cross over into illegal territory, not just a not best practice territory and making that nuanced distinction. Here is some sort of flesh on the bones of the things that I think can cross over. Discussing actual options, getting into hypotheticals or what ifs, that level of granular detail in public statements or conversations with individuals away from the table. Discussing mandated reserves, what is and is not adequate. Again, way too detailed. That's the type of thing that you're discussing in closed session with, with your team. And this is more of a best practice. There's nothing in the era that says this is illegal. But as trustee one pointed out, you know, insulting people isn't illegal, but it's not a very good idea. Don't disparage members of the negotiation team, either side of the table. Right? You, you, you started your meeting with an acknowledgement of the practices you've committed to, one of which, which I always love to hear, is that boards will exemplify the behavior they expect from others. Right? How can we demand from our employees or our students a level of civility and discourse if trustees or high level administrators are not exhibiting it? Right? So disparaging certainly doesn't help negotiations and it would sound as if it runs against your governance goals that you've just expressed for yourself. So the second one, which I've talked less about, is avoiding an unfair practice for surface bargaining. And I think that you can be helpful in this area too. And this is by providing appropriate bargaining authority and policy direction in a timely fashion. What gums us up sometimes is not getting authority from the board. And if we don't have authority from the board, then we are not in a position to put an offer across the table. And if that happens repeatedly, because we are not getting the authority we need, then that starts to look like surface bargaining. And so so making sure that we've, we've set up, we've done good backwards timelining and planning to make sure that boards are getting the information that they need in sufficient time to provide us the guidance that we need in sufficient time to become to the table, fully prepared to negotiate with the authority we need to negotiate. So those timing pieces and getting authority from the board are really critical. And my thought, with your permission, Madam President of the Board, is that I have three case studies. I have looked at them. I, I think that we have covered these issues fairly well. I'm happy to go through them, but we are at about an hour and a half. And I actually thought I would need about two hours for the training, but I'm, it's 8:00 PM on a Tuesday night. I'm happy to close the training here. Or I can walk through the case studies, whichever you prefer.
I think that there might be a few questions. I mean, I would rather
A better way to spend the time. I think that's better. And actually, what that, that allows me to do, which I love, is I can take the slides down. And now we, you can all see each other. I hate the way the slides dominate the screen. So instead of canned case studies, in whatever additional time you wish to give to the subject, I'm happy to answer questions and then I'll close. When you, trustee, as you feel we're ready to close.
Great. I don't see any hands at the moment up. I'm sure they'll be coming up shortly, but I do have two questions. One's a question and maybe the other one is, if you have time. If there are no other questions, also another question. So the first has to do with MOUs. And I think that that's still just a point of confusion for me. So MOUs, in my understanding, are negotiated items. And so if they're negotiated items that have financial impact, MOUs with financial impact, let me just say, if they are negotiated items, then they still need the direction and authority from the board for MOUs to be approved and/or negotiated. Am I incorrect in my thinking?
So MOU, generally, no. You're not incorrect in your thinking. A MOU stands for a memorandum of understanding. MOUs can, can exist in a variety of contexts. Okay? So one kind of an MOU is when you're negotiating the effects. Right? You're not negotiating actual language that belongs in the contract. You're not negotiating the contract language. Remember, I indicated, I described earlier, we negotiate actual contract language and sometimes we're implementing a managerial right, but there are effects. The, the way we manage those effects don't belong in the collective bargaining agreement itself because those effects are ephemeral. Those effects are related to an isolated instance. They don't have ongoing meaning that belong in a, in a, in a, in a contract that exists over a period of years. That is an MOU. Many of those MOUs must get board approval. Right? Because we are talking about additional compensation for training or to fix or, or all sorts of things, right? I think those MOUs are appropriate to come to the board.
Okay, excellent.
Okay. I, I also think that under the education code, ultimately, every contract is ratified by the board. And an MOU is a contract.
Right.
Right? Whatever it is, it ultimately, you know, and ratification is sort of a more after the fact. It's, you're not as fully engaged around it. But I generally think that contracts, for the most part, kind of word. Now, I will say, as a practical matter, I'm aware of MOUs in, in many districts that never make their way to the Boards of Trustees as a matter of practice. Side, side letters or agreements on how the contract is going to be interpreted in a, on a, on a narrow, non-economic issue.
And that would be for a non-economic issue, but if it has financial impact, more probably than not. As you were saying, it's okay, it's a contract.
Well, they're all contracts.
Right.
They're all contracts, even, even, even
Non-economic.
Non-economic. It's, it's an agreement. You're going to do this, I'm going to do that. That's a, that's a contract. But so I do think ultimately, contracts generally should be coming to the board for some form of approval or ratification. Not all MOUs are negotiated in the, also, right? Full negotiating teams, everyone sitting down and negotiating a new contract. A settlement agreement might be considered. agreement might be considered a type of an MOU. And those are generally not reached with full negotiations with bargaining teams. That might be a much smaller conversation between, you know, an administrator and a union official on how to resolve a particular issue. Those are sometimes called MOUs, not always, but they're a side letter, they're an agreement. I do generally think those those go to the board.
Okay, good, okay, that that makes it clear for me in terms of they do go to the board, they do have a financial impact. Okay, excellent. And then the second question, I'm looking at my trustees to see if they have any other, if there are any other hands up. But my second question has to do with communication processes. You had said in one of, actually in two different slides, talking about certain things that can be communicated at different phases, right? As long as it's factual and it's not disclosing too information that could be that could be detrimental to negotiations, but as long as there are factual things that are disclosed. I guess my question really comes more along the lines of at different, wouldn't it, would it be helpful? Is it a best practice or is it a practice to actually have district updates at different phases of negotiation to the public so that, and again, not disclosing items that would be detrimental to the negotiations, but at least allowing updates? So there is less room for, I guess you could say, misinterpretation or less room for areas that may be points of disagreement. But just kind of making public updates as to this is where we are, this is where we are at this point, without disclosing things that would be unfortunate.
I think that that if a district was interested in communicating with public during negotiations, the way you have described it is the best way to do it. So it is not associated with now that things have gotten awful. We're going to start, right? It's just simply part of the practice. Whether it makes sense for a particular district to do that is going to depend. So I'm hesitant to make a generalization that that's a good idea for every district to do. I'm saying if a district is interested in communicating, that's the best way to do it. But whether it's a good idea is something where I think the board would want to hear from your chancellor on, your negotiator on, and then any such communication would come from your administration, not from the board itself. You would distance yourself from that. I don't think you should be involved in or be tasked with that type of district management. That would come from the district. But I have had boards express frustration and say to their chancellor, why aren't you saying something? And the chancellor would say, because we don't think it would be productive or we made a decision, you know, not to. And so boards sometimes get very interested in how and whether the district is communicating with the public over the status, and you may have something to say about it. And that would be a great closed session conversation with your negotiator and your chancellor around negotiations. But where there's an interest in communicating with the public, the best way, I think, is in just sort of a regular, generic, factual report, whether things are in going along swimmingly or whether things are have, you know, hit a bump in the road.
Thank you. Trustees, do we have any questions out there? Here is any clarification? I do see trustee Delphine Polk.
I have a quick question. Thank you so much for this, Laura. I think this has been really helpful, especially for myself and trustee Jenkins, who just got elected a few months ago. Can you define what direct dealing is? I spoke about it earlier, but I'd like to get a little more clarification around what that is.
Sure, direct dealing is when, and it happens in a variety of contexts, not just in the not just when we're at the table in labor negotiations. But direct dealing is when administration works directly with an individual employee that's the member of a bargaining unit over the rules that will apply to that particular person that in that relate to their terms and conditions of employment. That is direct dealing. The the union owns, the ERA gives rights to individual employees, their right to organize into unions, their right to be protected from retaliation, for engaging in union activities. Right, it gives a range of rights and protections to individuals, but it also gives a set of rights to unions themselves. The union has the right to be the exclusive representative of its members. And when we go to an individual employee and start talking with them, it violates that. Even if it's making that individual happy, you're not allowed to go to an individual employee and say, you know, you did a great job. I mean, I'd like to give you a bonus. That's illegal. And you know what? If you did it, your union would grieve it, even though you were paying more money to an employee, and the union would be right. The union would be right because they own the negotiations over compensation. So that's that's an example of direct dealing.
Thank you. I have some more questions, but I'll go ahead and let my colleagues go. Go ahead, trustee Jenkins.
Mr. Reese, is it okay if I go?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you, Laura. This has been very informative question. So it seems like our duty as trustees is extremely limited in scope. So it seems like we are to provide direction to approve the agreement and to declare impasse. Is that correct?
You have the ultimate authority to adopt the agreement, yes. And but that's huge, because if your if your negotiators have not done their job well and they've gotten out ahead of the board and we've reached a tentative deal that the board doesn't approve, then you don't approve the contract. So so all of those baby steps along the way, reaching out to the board, getting clear authority for what we're permitted to put on the table are critically important. Because if we don't do that and we make a deal that you don't support, then you don't ratify, then you don't adopt it.
Do we have more questions? Trustee Delphine Polk, do you want another shot at a question? I don't see any other questions. Trustee Gonzalez, you win.
I'll let my other colleagues go. Go ahead. Thank you.
I don't see anyone jumping up.
My hand up.
Okay, oh, I'm sorry. Yes, so Jalina, yes.
So Laura, thank you for this. This has been completely insightful. And I think you you made a reference earlier that the financial aspects of the budget are obviously discussed in open session. And it's based on that information that the board has adopted as it's either tentative or final budget. It's used to help guide us in our in our understanding and typically in our direction to our lead negotiator on what parameters the board is comfortable with. So I think this goes back to trustee Jenkins's understanding of we have a limited role, yes, in that we're not involved in the negotiation process. But we are definitely, if I'm, if I, if this is the correct framing, we definitely, as the trustees, give, set the parameters for which the 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 lead negotiators understand is to be the, you know, to frame and understand, you know, their limits and what they're, that they are in essence, operating at the direction of the board. So there is quite a bit of framing that the trustees provide in assisting with giving direction on negotiations. Is that a correct interpretation?
Yes.
Thank you. I just I just was looking for my own, just reinterpreting it so it makes sense to me. Thank you.
Trustee Delphine Polk.
Yes, so earlier you were discussing the MOU process. Is there a legal distinction or any sort of distinction between MOUs that are a result of a grievance? Or any other MOUs? Can you describe that?
I don't think there is. I I think that the the way you would, the board's role in reviewing any MOU really would depend upon both the the fiscal elements as well as the institutional impact. And, you know, so and the other thing, and I, of course, I heard public comment. And I I guess I've got some sense of where this may be coming from, although I'm not familiar with any particular issues, and I do want to stay away from any specific issues that that may be going on and keep this at a general level. Grievances address two different kinds of things in general. There are grievances that are contract interpretation grievances. The district didn't follow the contract when it did X. There are also grievances related to employee discipline. And so an agreement to reduce a three-day suspension to a reprimand. I don't think that comes to the board of trustees. And I don't, and I wouldn't call that an MOU, but some people might. It's a settlement of a grievance over discipline. And I don't think those disciplinary decisions come to the board. The only disciplined decisions that come to the board are through certain types of statutory appeals or contractual appeals, depending on whether we're talking about your academic or your classified bargaining units. So the other thing is, it's hard to answer the question, is there are different kinds of grievances? A contract grievance is about how we're interpreting the contract. And there, it's possible that what we're agreeing to do is reinterpret the meaning of the contract or clarify the meaning of the contract. And so there it really will depend. I do think there are situations where if we are simply agreeing, this is what we meant all along, and we're going to agree that that's what this means and how it should be applied here, that that is also something that would not reach the board of trustees. But if we agree that we are going to amend the contract the next time it opens, and until then, we're going to do X, and we're actually really changing contract terms that the board approved, maybe that does come to the board. So what I'm struggling with is it's too general a question.
Yeah. Yeah, I just wanted to get some clarity because, again, I'm new and so just wanted to get the distinctions between the different MOUs. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
I do think there are, that I can think of a number of scenarios where I wouldn't even call it an MOU. But there are certain types of grievance resolutions that don't come to a board, and then there are others where it would be very appropriate to come to a board.
Okay, we have trustee Gonzalez, you and Nikki.
Thank you. Earlier you were talking about budget transparency. And so if the district were in the process of negotiating on financial issues but was refusing to share its assumptions about budgets, so that they were, the the union was operating with one set of assumptions about what a budget was and the district was operating on another set of assumptions about what money was available. I'm gathering you would say that would not be a best practice, that that would be contrary to effective negotiation. Yes?
Well, I'm not sure what you mean by budget assumptions, and I don't want to assume what you mean by budget assumptions.
How much money is available, for what purposes, and and what are, you know, what projected income would be and what the projected expenditures would be?
Usually what happens is CBOs prepare very detailed budget books that have a tremendous amount of information and those get shared. What we don't share across the table necessarily is and this is why I'm I'm hesitant to use the word assumptions is our hypotheticals, our scenarios that we run, our analyses. Those are too closely tied to strategy and those are generally not shared or don't have to be. But and and it's not the district's responsibility to interpret the data. So everybody, you know, the union gets the same raw data, we get it, and and we both interpret. Now, sometimes it's clear that sharing assumptions, explaining our thinking is going to help us reach some sort of common ground so that we are seeing the numbers in the same way. And and it can facilitate a good conversation. And so there are times where that might be appropriate. But there is a line, and it's not one that I can delineate in a in a in a hypothetical, but there is a line between the actual data and then the district's internal analysis scenario running, strategizing around those pieces. Now, we very commonly will get, you know, questions from unions over, you know, where does the money come from to fund this project? Is this money from our general funds or is this getting pulled from our categorical funds? And how much of our, you know, and we'll get detailed, drill down questions about where, how is the money flowing in, how is the money flowing out? And those are the types of questions we can answer, because those are about the money that we have and what it is. But projections or, you know, those are, that's different. Sometimes that gets shared, sometimes it doesn't. It really depends on the the types of assumptions that you're talking about.
In in this district, if I'm not mistaken, we are under the working model of interest-based bargaining, that we 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 share an interest. And to the extent that we believe that what's good for the district is good for the employees, then we try to share more information so that we're checking that information and we're saying, oh, here's here's what we think would be good. Here's how we think we can get there. In general, that's what we're trying to do, is it not?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Yes, no, I'm I tend to be highly transparent and try to share our, you know, how we got to our positions, what our reasoning is behind them, what our thinking is. That's how you get to an agreement.
Okay.
And I'll just say that I I very much appreciate what you had recommended or actually articulated, which is that our data, our information, our budgets show up in open session are what we're working on so that that, to me, says not only that are the trustees on the same page, but the district and the individuals within the district are on the same page. And not so much the interpretation will always be the same, but I think that it's an effort to get as much information out there. And if we get as much information out there, then it seems more likely to be able to work at least more effectively together. So I just, I just, I really, I just wanted to say that I appreciate that recommendation because I think that we have missed that at certain points, and that is truly critical. Any other last thoughts? I do not see anybody else. Oh, Dr. Jackson, yeah.
I just wanted to personally thank Laura Scholken and LCW for pulling this together in such a short period of time. As I mentioned earlier, we're kind of truncating things because of the transition. And I did want the board to get this training. I think it's extremely important because you play a very critical role as we go forward with negotiations. So thank you, Laura. I know you worked late on to getting this. I know you have worked late on to getting this presentation to us, so I appreciate that. And also the work that um, Dr. McKinley has done to get us to this point. So I just wanted to publicly thank you.
It's a pleasure. I'm happy to spend the evening with you.
Okay, I believe then that we are um, and, and definitely our gratitude. I think all of the trustees believe that this was such an helpful and such an important part of the process and timely, obviously. Um, but since I have no other questions and it is getting later in the evening and you've talked for a good. Thank you, hour and a half or more. Um, we really appreciate it. I will move to adjourn, not that I have to move, but I, I will call this the adjournment of the meeting.
Thank you so much.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you, my board members.
Yes, yes.
Thanks.
Good night, everyone. Yes, absolutely. Bye-bye.